I'd like to call this meeting back into order. This time, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public comment, we have James O'Connor. Clap to the mic, please. If you'd just give your name and address to the record.
James O'Connor, 81 Rochdale Street, Auburn. I want to thank your board chairman and the Board of Selectmen for the time. I'm here to give good thoughts, good compliments. You know, you don't hear too many, but first of all, Lady Chairman, I'd like to give my prayers to you and your family. I read the article about your brother.
Oh, thank you.
And, yeah, very sorry.
Thank you.
But first of all, I'm here and, you know, I'm not going to ask any questions. I don't expect any, but I followed that gold store that was going on in town and it kind of hit me. I knew the gentleman that got up and spoke and everything he said was true, but I think it goes out to everybody, the protection that we're getting from the Auburn Police Department. We have a great chief, a good department, and how it ended, I followed it and I thought it was going to go to the next stage and I was ready to come up here and you know how I can get and when my wife found out I was coming up here tonight, she cringed, "Oh, please, don't start, don't start," so I'm going to be. But anyways, it was, I believe, last week when I saw the case was solved and I read the paper before I went up the track and I was kind of excited not to see anybody lose their business or their work ethics, but I think the board laid out a rule and a law, this is what we're going to go by, and thanks to the Auburn Police Department for what they did. And I was so excited, after I walked my two hours, I ran over to the police station and I saw the chief and he took the time and we had some laughs about other things and you don't hear the good things. And we have a great chief in this town, the men and women on the Police Department, what they did in this case, I mean, they're excellent in all cases, but I think when we lose something, something that's valuable to your parents or anything, it is sad and, you know, when I saw the chief got up and he started to speak and I know you have your rules, he couldn't and I saw his face get red and it reminded me of him and we joked about that and, but I think he was speaking from the heart in his family, but I know you have your rules and your regulations and that, you know, what they went by. So I'm very thankful for the men and women of this Police Department and I read about the lieutenant and I was kind of sad when I saw in the paper, but we're losing, if he does go, I don't know if he is, we're losing a great guy. Next thing I'd like to speak about, I won't keep you long, I know you've got a lot here, but...
And speaking of our roles, we do have that three-minute rule.
If I could extend it a little.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The town manager, I missed her evaluation. I was kind of down this summer, so I wish I was here for it, so I figured tonight, I was so happy with the Police Department and what they always do in the board, I wanted to come up and see you and congratulate you. The city manager, I saw him a couple of weeks ago and him and his wife were probably trying to get rid of me for talking so much. And I think your rating was one to five and she got a very good rating. I kind of rate people to a 10. I give you a 10-plus. What you have done for this town and the assistant manager here, we have taken a big step forward. I see a lot, I can't see too many flaws. I know when you first came on, I did meet with you through Mr. Simonian, he helped me out with a conversation, I went to him when he had his workshop and we set up a meeting and we had two department heads and I guess I wasn't happy in the beginning with, but it worked out at the end. And two days later, I met with one of the department heads and we talked and it was... So I just hope it continues and you're here for the long run. Nothing against, like I say, Charlie O'Connor, I was very, very close with him, Ed can tell you that. The Highway Surveyor, Darlene Wood, she was good, but they only had so much to work with. And I hate changes. I didn't like what was happening, I don't like changes, but, you know, this change year has been fantastic.
Thank you for your kind comments. Thank you.
One more. I'd just like to thank all departments, the DPW, what they do, everybody.
Yeah, they're all here.
They are the backbones and, you know, like I say, I don't go too far, but I'd like to thank you all, the Board of Selectmen and I'm talking to Sharon I contact with, Mrs. Dagicid, these are the backbones.
Uh-huh.
And like I say, without this great leadership here, everything is great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your kind comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we have no public presentations or hearings. In your packet, you'll find a letter from the chief. Dear Madam Chair, please be advised that the Auburn Police Department recently conducted alcohol compliance checks with local liquor license holders. All license holders passed with the exception of the Auburn Package Store, which is located at 196 Auburn Street. I believe a public hearing regarding the alleged violation would be in order so that you may make a determination as to if a violation has occurred and then take any action the board deems appropriate. Should you have any questions, please contact me at any time. Respectfully, Andrew Slukas. I'll entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectmen, item 7-2.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So the item on 7-2 is a vote to schedule a hearing on a liquor license compliance violation. Do we have the calendar for the next meeting? It's October 15th would be the best meeting. So October 15th, which is a Tuesday, it's the day after the Monday holiday, is there a motion?
We'll make a motion that we schedule a hearing relative to the liquor compliance violation by the Auburn Package Store and have that for October 15th.
Second.
7:05?
Perfect. 7:05 is perfect. And there's a second. Is there any discussion under this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So we will notify the license holder of the hearing. Next, in your packet, we have from the town planner. The planning board understands that the select board has received requests that Camden Drive be accepted as a public road. At this time, the planning board is working with Mr. Bossclaire to finalize the required construction items, including the subdivision approval. The board expects this process to be completed at the October 8th, 2013 meeting. For this reason, I am requesting that the Board of Selectmen schedule their street layout hearing for the October 15th, 2013 meeting. This timeframe will allow the planning board to finalize the subdivision and submit a report. Please contact me with any questions. That's from Mr. Adam Bernie. I will now entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectmen, item 7-3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion regarding the vote to schedule a street layout hearing for Camden Drive?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That'll be scheduled for October 15th. The chief has something. We will go back to Board of Selectmen items and we have the October 29th, 2013 Town Meeting Mournant enclosed as the draft Town Meeting Mournant. A motion would be in order to approve the warrant subject to final review by Town Council. That would be the first action we would be taking on the warrant is to approve the warrant subject to final council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The board may also wish to make recommendations on each article recommending to approve, to not approve, to defer, or to take no position at this time, and we could review that at our meeting prior to town meeting. So we can go through the articles at this time. Article 1 is standard, so recommendation?
Motion recommended.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. If you want me to read the entire thing, I'm happy to do that.
Before we second, I have a question on the budget with the figure being blank. Will we have that at a meeting prior to the town meeting?
If we can just second for discussion because there's a motion?
Second.
Okay. Under discussion, Mr. Kasnovich.
Through the chair, Mr. Grossman, all depending on the action by the board tonight, that number will be available when we mail out the warrant.
Does that answer your question?
Hmm?
Are there any questions on Article 2? Mr. Simonian?
Is the number that's going into that line, into that point, is that the total of all the changes in the article?
The net change in appropriations in Article 2 is being proposed is a reduction of $223,313. That will come off the amount that was voted as a total under Article 2 when it went to the annual town meeting, so that total will be revised.
It's a reduction.
For a total of roughly $50 million and change.
It'll be a reduction.
This article is a decrease from the...
Yes.
Okay. All right, overall decrease.
Are there any further questions? The motion is to recommend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article 3, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 11 of the May 7th, 2013 Annual Town Meeting and appropriate an additional $12,457.23 for Medicaid receipts. And this is by the Auburn School Department.
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
To recommend?
I'm sorry?
Motion to recommend?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Brunel is here, if any members want to hear from the school committee. It's a standard article. The Medicaid receipts is a standard article.
This is. Through the chair, this is a standard article. These funds come in in reimbursement to services we've provided, so we're seeking reimbursement back to the district.
Any questions? So we have a motion to recommend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. To see if this, again, Dr. Brunel, the next four school committee items, we may or may not have questions for you. Article 4, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $12,152 from general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2014 to fund transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs or act anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Motion recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for Dr. Brunel? Mr. Simonian?
Is there reimbursement for this or is the... I know we've seen this before, but is this known at the beginning of the school year or is this something that changes at...
It's not known at the beginning of the school year. Anytime a student either who's living in Auburn becomes homeless or lives in another community, we have an obligation to share in the cost to transport them. So it was a cost that the school department paid last year and actually State Auditor Suzanne Bump did designate it as an unfunded mandate and that's why the legislature went through and now is processing that. But it's going to the general fund for reimbursement to districts.
So every year, you don't know what that number is till the end of the school year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I couldn't remember, but thanks.
Mr. Kasnovich?
I could add to that. What we do know is we have already received this value of money. It was a 13 reimbursement that actually came in the first week in July, so it is available for appropriation FY '14.
Before I move on to Article 5, Dr. Brunel, this may be a good opportunity to introduce your new business manager and bring him up in case board members have any questions for him as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was intending to do that at the end, so if Mr. Gray wants to come up. Peter Gray joined the Auburn Public Schools as our business manager effective July 1st. We're excited to have him onboard and you will be seeing lots of him at meetings involving finances.
Welcome. Nice to meet you. Thank you. So if no members have any questions for Mr. Gray on Article 4, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted and you're welcome to stay up here and answer any questions that the board may have. Article 5, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the CIP program as described in Article, in Article, it doesn't say which one, of the May 7th, 2009 Annual Town Meeting and repurpose the balance of funds $36,000 originally appropriated to the Julia Bankhoff School and $39,000 originally appropriated to the Mary D. Stone School, now to be used for the installation of any energy-efficient lighting upgrades to the Auburn High School Gymnasium and foyer with the work to be completed during the fall of 2013.
Madam Chair, that would be Article 4.
Thank you. So that is described in Article 4 and that warrant will be clear when it goes out. Thank you. Dr. Brunel?
This issue here, we, Mr. Fahey is working to replace the lights in the gymnasium. We were fortunate last year in working with Town Manager Jacobson and Mr. Kasnovich and Town Planner Bernie to take advantage of Green Community Act funds. There were not enough funds though to support the replacement of lights in the gymnasium and many are out. They are no longer manufacturing those lights. We did find some through warehouse, but our intention would be to replace them with LED lights that have about a 20-year shelf life. These projects, these funds, would be diverting from Mary D. and Julia Bancroft for projects that were completed, so it would be no additional funds, just diverting them to the high school.
Mr. Simonian?
I have a question through the chair and Mr. Kasnovich. We've been making an effort to go back and clean up the old CIP of ones that were either unspent or transferred around and I thought we were past 2009, so if that's the case, how does this affect that or is there something that changed? I'm just wondering how, was this left out for a reason or...
It was, through the chair, it was authorized in 2009, probably wasn't borrowed till a year later, so the last time we took a look at that, it fit within the arbitrage requirements or the eligibility of the amount of time we can spend those funds. So what we would do is at the next annual town meeting, we will go back to the oldest borrowing and clean that up. I think we cleaned up through '08. I think the last time, '09, was still eligible to be spent.
Did you have something?
The only other issue too, we were waiting in the school department for the determination regarding which facilities would continue to be used as educational sites and the master plan team recommended that Mary D. and Julia Bancroft not be in the future and that's been accepted by school committees, so that was one of the other reasons for us making some decisions on a delayed basis.
Any further questions? Mr. Grossman?
Just concerned with the fact that we've got another couple of years in those two schools and that we maintain the condition of the schools and the safety of the children in the next two years and we don't let them get run down and decay.
No, through the chair, that would absolutely be our intention as well. These were for projects that actually were completed and so there's no need for that funding at this point, but we agree completely.
Any further questions? Is there a motion on Article 5?
Motion recommended.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And the last school article, Article 6, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $108,750,000 from general fund revenues for the acquisition of four iPad carts, 30 iPads per cart and Bluetooth keyboards to align the district in preparation for the spring of 2014, partnership for the assessment of readiness for college and careers field test and the 2014-2015 implementation of the park testing. Dr. Brunel?
The park testing, there is a commission out there who has been working on this. There were at one time about 27 states, there are some that have since dropped off, but the intention is to do field testing this spring. Auburn was notified that Julia Bancroft, Packachog and Auburn Middle School students, select groups within there, would be field testing. The whole park assessment was originally designed as an online media-rich testing environment. They are realizing now that some school districts may not have the technology in order to implement it that way, so they're going with the paper and pencil version option. The challenge is that this test was designed to be given electronically and therefore, I think, puts our students at a disadvantage should they take it paper and pencil. For this field testing, only Packachog will be allowed to take it on computer. We currently don't have enough technology to provide what I would believe to be or we would deem to be an appropriate testing environment. What we'd have right now is we have five computers in a classroom and so while teaching was going on, five students would be working on a computer to take what will eventually be a high-stakes testing situation. So we're recommending or requesting from you for four iPad carts along with the Bluetooth keyboards. There was a memo that Mr. Bouvier had created, there were very strict requirements in terms of what types of technology can be used for this, iPads being one of them, but there must be a Bluetooth keyboard attached. We currently have iPads in our schools, but none with the Bluetooth keyboards. We want to get those in the hands of our students so that they're comfortable with them and ready to take the test. The purchase of these will prepare us for the field test in the spring only. When and if the decision is made to go full-scale with this, we'd be looking for additional purchases and presentations will be made to the school committee upcoming about that.
Mr. Simonian?
So what is the purpose of this testing?
It could eventually, has the potential to replace MCAS. The decision has not yet been made to do that, but that's the potential that it has.
So who's spearheading this?
It's actually a national consortium, but Massachusetts is one of the leaders in this. Interestingly though, the Massachusetts Department of Education or Board has not yet voted to go to park, yet they are requiring that we go through field testing come this spring. So these iPads will put our students at what I believe to be a fair testing advantage.
So there's no guarantee that they'll adopt this and replace MCAS with this? They're recommending that towns spend money for something that may never be implemented? Possibly?
It is quite possible that they may not go with this. All indications are that they will be voting favorably, but there's nothing official. You're right, Mr. Simonian.
And if you know, what is the state's position to this point? Because I know they've been, you know, pretty hot and heavy on MCAS for years, that that is the end-all, be-all of...
They are one of the leaders in this park national assessment consortium, but they've not yet taken, at least as of today, an official statement on going to park. All indications when we have meetings and it's a frustration that's been shared by superintendents and asking department officials when they will make that determination so that we can hopefully plan appropriately.
And this is for basically, you said a field test, this is to determine what?
The reliability of the question. So it's a field test that will happen in the spring and they're looking to have a million students participate in that, Auburns being some of them.
And then if they, you said there's a second part to this, an actual test that would require additional...
So once the determination gets made, if we're going to switch to park, they will make, and I want to make clear, they will make a paper and pencil version available. I believe, and others would agree, that it puts our students at a disadvantage in taking a test designed for multimedia and having taken it on paper. But regardless of what the decision is made here, iPads will absolutely be used and put to great use in our schools. Our students engage with them regularly.
Anything else, Mr. Simonian?
Yeah, one last question. So the state is considering this and they're once again putting the burden on the town to come up with the funding for it.
I will share with you, at a June meeting, when I brought this up to the school committee, at their request, a letter was sent to our representatives expressing our concern about this. We have a plan or intend to have a plan in place so that our students are ready to take this, when and if the decision is made to go with this. So I think the school committee shares your frustration that this is an expectation, yet with no funding attached to it.
Okay.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, will there be technology upgrades with these iPads coming forward? It seems as though a computer is designed and tomorrow it's obsolete. Is there a program in place to maintain that and keep up with that?
We do. Through Mr. Bouvier and his team, we keep up with all of the requirements and any updates that are available through park because this is so new, they list very specific requirements. In the iPad, the version that we would buy would fully comply.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions on this article? Is there a motion regarding this article?
Motion recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question or discussion?
I'm not going to support this and I understand, you know, that these could be used on the roads for the kids and, you know, I realize, you know, the technology that they're going to use for the rest of their lives, I spent several years in that industry, but I just, for the same reason that I haven't supported other articles where there's a lot of unknowns it seems, and again, where we continue to get the burdens put on us for something that the state seems to think is a good idea, but they're not sure if they're going to do it, for that reason, it has nothing to do with the schools in general, just for that reason, I'm not supporting it.
Understood.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Simonian? Dr. Brunel, before you move away, and I know we've completed the school committee articles, I just want to invite the chairman up for a minute, Chairman Jeff Laurie. So Chairman Laurie of the school committee?
Yes.
We just wanted to congratulate you on being selected the fire chief, I mean, the police chief in the town of Oxbridge, but you hold dual roles like so many of our prominent citizens here and your presence will be greatly missed on the Auburn School Committee when you move on to Oxbridge, but the town of Auburn will now have two big sets of shoes to fill, not only on the school committee, but on the Police Department, but we congratulate you on your new position.
Thank you. It's been an honor, you know, working with you and working for the town and then also being a member of the Auburn School Committee and I'll miss both. I'm looking forward to the challenges of Oxbridge, but I do, I thank you all. Thank you very much.
And just so quickly, it is your intention to move to Oxbridge, am I correct? Is that what I read? And that's why you would be leaving the school committee?
That is why.
Yes.
If you're relocating to town.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, it's not yet, but we just wanted, it was breaking news today, so we wanted to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a very busy day.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Article 7, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article 3 of the May 2012 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Amend the balance of funds of $6,203, account number 302013581334, voting boost to fund storage, shelving and file cabinet needs of the clerk's office and vault.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's well-needed down there.
The clerk is not here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article 8, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $25,000 for window replacement at the Auburn Police Station.
Make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second? For discussion?
Second.
Okay. Did you want, can we have...
I know that there have been several problems with the windows and they need tending to.
Okay. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair to the town manager, what discussion has come up, you know, to... Through the chair, to the town manager, what discussion has come of, you know, the replacement of these windows? I mean, the building is not that old, and to have these windows problems developed as soon as they have, will these window replacements correct the problems?
They will correct the problems with the windows, through the chair, but there are problems with the building. There are expenses that we take on an annual basis. There are issues with the HVAC system. There are issues with certain sections of the building that were built out. The most pressing and immediate need that we have identified have been is the windows. I know approximately six months to a year ago, we had an energy audit that was completed as part of our Green Community application and later designation, and when the consultants went into all the buildings in town to look at it, they specifically pointed to the loss of heat and the other issues that are happening with the windows at the police station. There are certain windows that are completely rotted out, so it's a real need that we have to fix. But will it fix all of the problems in the building? It will not. But this was a major expense. We did look to use some of the Green Community money for some other issues, but this was something that we felt needed to be done at the police department.
Chair, one other follow-up to that. This is just the cost of the windows themselves. The windows will be replaced by facilities management, which would save the town approximately about the same value. So if we were to outsource not only the purchase of the windows, but the installation, the cost would actually be twice what we're asking for.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Articles nine and ten, Chief Coleman is here, if you want to come up, if the board has any questions.
Me, too.
About his being elected president?
Yes.
No, absolutely, go ahead. That's why I invited him up, but we could, as long as he's recognized.
I just want to make a note that, first of all, I want to follow up to congratulate Detective Sergeant Laurie. It's a huge loss for the town of Auburn and a huge gain for Oxbridge, and I've had a couple of conversations with him, and I couldn't be happier for him personally. Professionally, of course, it's going to be difficult for us, but it's a pleasure working with him. And then, as our fire chief, I wanted to let everyone know that a couple of days ago, he was elected the chair of Fire District Seven, which is the South Worcester County District. I think there's twenty-three...
Six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six communities that are represented, and he was elected the chair of that. So that's quite an honor, and I don't believe there's been a turnover in some fifteen years.
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three.
I can assure you, I will not be there that long.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
So Article nine, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article Nine of the October nine, two thousand and eleven, fall town meeting as follows. Delete the balance thirty-four nine fifty-six. Ambulance refurb to the, and to amend Article Three of the May seven, two thousand and thirteen, annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of seven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine eighty-three. Replace ambulance one for a total of forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five eighty-three for replace Fire Department Service Truck in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. Chief, could you just give us an explanation on this?
Sure. This money would be used to replace our nineteen ninety-nine Ford F-350 pickup truck. This is the vehicle that is used as the department service truck. It also is the plow vehicle in the winter that we use to maintain both facilities. The truck is fifteen years old. It has fifty-four thousand actual road miles, and it has a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, what we would consider idling miles, for a total of a hundred and about ninety-one thousand miles on the engine. Over the course of the fifteen years, the truck has served us well, but we've replaced the transmission in it twice. The vehicle is essentially, you know, rotting out, so it's time. And as a side note, we did have this vehicle repainted in two thousand and eleven from Bay Path High School. I was sort of hoping that that paint job was going to buy us a little more time, but unfortunately, it did not. So that is the purpose for this request. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Are there any questions on this article? Mr. Simontian?
So the two balances that are being deleted, what happened with the other two vehicles?
Those vehicles were purchased, the one from two thousand and eleven, the thirty-four thousand dollars, that is money that we use to remount one of our ambulances. We purchased a new cabin chassis, remounted the box. We were able to negotiate, and with a trade, the price came in less, so that was a balance of funds that were appropriated. And the same thing, this past May, town meeting appropriated the purchase of a new ambulance one, and that seven thousand five sixty-nine is the balance of what was appropriated at town meeting for the year one payment. So ambulance one, ambulance two, that are referenced, those vehicles are both in service on the road.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article ten, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars from general fund revenues to replace the shift commander vehicle in the fire rescue department. Chief?
Yes, Madam Chair, this vehicle that I'm seeking to replace is a two thousand and two Chevy Tahoe. This vehicle is twelve years old. This is the vehicle that the shift commander, either the lieutenant or the captain, is in on a daily basis to answer their calls and other duties. This vehicle has ninety-one thousand, a little over ninety-one thousand actual road miles and two hundred and nineteen thousand idling hours on the engine, so it has a little over three hundred and ten thousand miles on the engine. Body-wise, the vehicle is in pretty good shape. We don't really have a lot of major rust and rot, but the engine is starting to see some wear and tear. We got some leaking around the valve covers. This vehicle was actually slated to be replaced in two thousand and sixteen, but working with the CFO, we're trying to clean the fire department's capital up in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen to make way for a larger purchase with the tower truck. So this actually was slated to be replaced two years ago, but has, you know, for other reasons, been pushed off and pushed off, so.
Thank you. Other, yep. Mr. Grossman?
Chief, the thirty-nine thousand, which would be coming out of general fund to replace the vehicle, would be for what kind of vehicle?
It would be for a Ford Explorer or the Interceptor, similar to the one that the police department just switched to, the SUV-type Interceptor.
Any further questions?
Is that a vehicle that is very low on mileage performance?
Yes, that vehicle is actually one of the vehicles that's listed on the Green Communities list, so that's always looked at when we're looking for vehicle purchases, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, chief. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Article eleven, I'll invite Mr. Pelletier up, and before I read Article eleven, it's an evening of announcements.
I know, thank you. Through the chair, I want to also congratulate Mr. Pelletier on being selected as the new Director of Public Health in Southbridge. And again, Auburn's loss and Southbridge's gain, but I wish you well, and I'm very happy for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being selected.
Best to you.
Yes, good luck.
Good luck, Andy.
Article eleven, to see if the town meeting will vote to approve the additional funding of twenty thousand dollars to supplement identified monies to allow the Board of Health to conduct a household hazardous waste collection day in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Pelletier?
Been with the town for thirteen years. From my second year, we've managed to get a hazardous waste day every other year. I don't know if anybody attended the hazardous waste day a year and a half ago. It was a pretty hectic event. It was a total blowout. I think two years is about as long as we can really push it between hazardous waste days. Very successful event. It's an event that keeps the hazardous waste, paints, oil, stuff like that. Hopefully, it keeps it out of our waters, out of our catch basins, gives people an alternative... When DEP turns around and says you can't dump that in the trash anymore, I have very diligently tried to find ways to give Auburn an alternative way to dispose of it legally. These hazardous waste days allow that to happen.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions? For Mr. Pelletier?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Our next eight articles are by the DPW Director, Bill Coyle. Bill, if you'd like to come up. You're not making any announcements, are you?
No, no announcements.
Okay. Article twelve, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate forty-one thousand dollars, of which thirty-seven thousand will be from general fund revenues to purchase and install two-way radios in DPW buildings, vehicles, town hall, police dispatch area, and further to appropriate four thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings to purchase and install two-way radios in sewer vehicles, sewer office, and to relicense the InTrak alarm data channel. Mr. Coyle?
First of all, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie, Ed, and Sharon. This article is to bring the DPW vehicles, all of our vehicles, the highway, parks, cemetery, and sewer, in addition to our buildings as well, into compliance with FCC. We are mandated to upgrade all of our radios, and we're actually, I think, should already have this in place, but it's something that we're currently working on, and I believe that it has to do with the change of the frequency of radios over the past to a narrow band to allow more frequencies to exist. Certainly not a radios communications expert, but I do know it's something that is required of the town, and so we have gotten several estimates, and it's about forty-one thousand to bring the DPW into compliance.
Thank you. Do any members have questions?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article thirteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate seven thousand ninety-six dollars from two thousand and thirteen State Hurricane Irene Account two five one zero three one three to purchase plow equipment for two DPW vehicles. Mr. Coyle?
This is, one DPW vehicle needs the, an entire setup for the plow and the truck end of the plow frame. In one vehicle, we were able to reuse another plow and just the equipment on the truck itself. And with an effort for us to utilize all our town vehicles to do most of our plowing, we actually have the, one of the janitors and other staff, part-time employees, come in to help us plow, so we're trying to equip as many DPW vehicles as we can with plows to do most of the work in-house.
Are there any questions?
Motion to recommend.
That balance, the entire balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Kozinov, if you can just give an update on that account, that money is available in that account?
Yes, both Bill and I sat down and reviewed what monies may be available for such a purpose. I believe that would totally strip that account.
Yes, yeah, that was...
Total amount available.
Total balance, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article fourteen, to see if the town meeting will appropriate twenty, vote to appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings to replace a pump and perform repairs at the jet vac truck. Mr. Coyle?
These are repairs needed for the jet truck. That's the large white sewer truck that you see going around. In addition to cleaning the sewer system, it's also utilized with catch basins as well, and over time, the pump has gone to a point where it needs to be replaced. The pump itself is sixteen thousand dollars. There's additional repairs that are also needed to the truck, so the total cost is about twenty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article fifteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate forty-three hundred dollars from the expendable trust cemetery perpetual care account to purchase a new roll-around canvas tent with tow package for the Department of Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery. Mr. Coyle?
As Ed had mentioned, we had a meeting about a week or so ago and met with Wayne Blumquist as well to go over the cemetery needs, and there are several needs, as you'll see outlined, and one of them is to have a new tent purchased. The current tent that they have is getting old and worn, so that's why that's in here.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Simontian?
What is that used for?
During the funerals, in particular, in climate weather, when it's raining out.
Mr. Grossman?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article sixteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate twenty-three thousand, twenty, two thousand three hundred and forty dollars from the expendable trust cemetery perpetual care account to purchase a lowering device for the Department of Public Works, Parks Cemetery, Parks Recreation, and Cemetery. Mr. Coyle?
Again, this, the lowering device that they currently have is getting old. They've done many repairs on it, but it's to a point where I don't think they feel comfortable repairing it much longer, so we're looking to replace that.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simontian?
On these three articles, including, which would be fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, I'm assuming seventeen is going to be the same, you're replacing something that's worn out. What, is that, is that equipment cleared surplus, or is it tossed?
We would keep the, keep most of it for backup, so if they were to have funerals, two funerals going on at one time, we would keep the older equipment for backup, but can't use it as frequently as we have been. So that would go into a position where it would be backup equipment.
Is there anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Article sixteen.
Okay. Okay, did we vote on Article sixteen?
Sixteen to vote.
Is there a vote, is there, all those in favor of Article sixteen?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. Article seventeen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate three hundred and fifty dollars from the expendable trust cemetery perpetual care account to purchase artificial greens for the Department of Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery. Mr. Coyle?
Same reasoning. It's just getting old, needs to be replaced.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article eighteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate five hundred dollars from the expendable trust cemetery perpetual care account to purchase aluminum staging planks for the Department of Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery.
The current planks are wooden planks, and these are the planks that actually have the coffin set on top of, so obviously, something that needs to be structurally sound, and we'll be replacing them with aluminum staging planks.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And Article eighteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate twenty thousand dollars, of which thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve will be from the October two thousand and eleven MEMA snowstorm, and twenty-one seventy-four from the state two thousand and twelve flood relief account two five one two two zero one two, and forty-two fourteen from the general fund revenues to purchase two Cyrus closed spreader control systems. Mr. Coyle?
Again, I met with Ed to go over some of the accounts, that there were some balances remaining from MEMA and also from flood relief, so we're going to look to clean those accounts and use those towards funding these two Cyrus units, or Cyrus units. And what they're essentially, a computerized system that we put on our plow trucks to control the amount of salt, it actually goes with the speed of your truck. So rather than have them, having the salt being manually adjusted by the operator, it's actually controlled by the speed of the truck itself. So if you stop, you don't see that pile of salt because the driver or the operator didn't turn the equipment down. Talking with the state, they've seen a significant reduction in the salt usage, probably twenty percent reduction on the trucks, and so in addition to, we calibrate these. At the end of the year, I can actually get a printout of how much salt each truck has used for a lane mile, so environmentally, it's something, obviously, not just cost, but environmentally, trying to minimize the amount of salt usage as well. So we have three trucks currently equipped. All the new trucks that we order now, the larger trucks, come with this equipment. We have three, three trucks that are newer, two thousand and three, two thousand and four era, so we expect to get another probably five, ten years or so out of those trucks. This would equip at least two more trucks with this computerized system, and it'll be one more that we'd, at some point, like to also have installed.
Mr. Simonian.
If one of, if a truck that's equipped with one of these wrecked or taken out of service, can these be transferred to another vehicle?
Yes, absolutely.
And since, since it's a computerized unit, is there, is there some kind of service agreement for upgrades, or repairs, or service on these? Or is that, do you know if there's an additional cost associated with, you know, I mean, every, every technology, something changes year over year, and you got to upgrade to this to make it still compatible, or whatever, so.
Right. I, I don't think the upgrades would be necessary. I mean, obviously, repairs, if, if it does need repair, I don't believe these come with, you know, a future contract for repair. And we've had, I think we had two years now, no, two years with one of them, we haven't had any problems with it. But, but to answer your question, no, it doesn't come with that.
So any idea, like, what a repair, you know, is there some kind of standard?
A lot of the mechanism, we would try to repair in-house, but if it came to the actual computer system itself, we'd have to send it out. But I don't know offhand, we haven't come across that yet. I can look into it before we purchase these to see if that's something that we would be interested in.
Yeah. If we could, you think you could do that before town meeting, just so we could get an idea? I'd just like to know.
I'll find out. I'll see if they, if, one, if they come with any type of, I'm certain they come with a warranty, but if we have any maintenance-type contract that comes along with it, and if not, how much would it cost to purchase it?
Yeah.
I'll look into it.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
So do you have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Defer?
Or actually, we'll.
Take no action at this time?
Take no action at this point, wait till town meeting to take action.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
Article twenty, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from general fund revenues to the stabilization, stabilization fund. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, first of all, I just want to make a note that a number of these purchases in capital equipment, other than those that are marked to come out of the perpetual care account, are coming out of general fund revenues as part of the financial policies that the Finance Committee and the Board adopted, to try to remove things from the CIP list and therefore having to borrow for them. Their one-time expenditures, pay for it now, eliminate the need to borrow, and eliminate the debt service. So some of the items that you see here fall as a result of the financial plan. Likewise, tonight, we are, the article twenty, the specific amount that we're looking to put into stabilization at this point is three hundred thousand dollars. Of course, that will be defined the evening of town meeting, depending on how the vote goes on these items, but we're looking to put three hundred thousand dollars into stabilization for this year. As we have done the last, this will be the third fall town meeting that we've done, so to appropriate money toward the stabilization in the fall, once we know what we have available. Also want to mention that that is in addition to one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we have in new growth. That's over and above the four hundred thousand dollars in new growth that we received, and again, that's per the financial policies that this Board and the Finance Committee adopted, to take additional revenues over and above four hundred thousand in new growth and apply it toward the reduction in the tax rate. So in addition to putting three hundred thousand into the stabilization account, we're looking to use one hundred and eighty-five thousand in new growth to reduce the tax rate.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simonian.
We, we won't know the actual dollar amount until the next town meeting.
Well, as it stands right now, it's a little over three hundred thousand dollars, but contingent upon what action town meeting takes on those other articles, we may ask that we increase that amount by the value of the article that does not pass a town meeting. So right now, it stands at three hundred. The reason we didn't put a value in for tonight's meeting, because that, that could change. And quite often, we always put appropriate a sum of money. We will let town meeting know at the beginning of the meeting, as it stands right now, we would be recommending a value of three hundred, provided, or contingent upon the outcome of the other funding articles.
But it wouldn't be less than the three hundred thousand?
So if all, if all the articles as presented pass, we would recommend a, then, a value of three hundred thousand go into stabilization.
And if they don't pass, it would be an increase to the three hundred thousand, so it would be a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars. So it's a minimum of three hundred thousand, Mr. Simonian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article twenty-one, we have Director, Library Director Diane Ramsey with us, if we have any questions. Article twenty-one, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article thirty-six of the May seven, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting as follows. Roof replacement from one hundred and fifteen thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Window and blind replacement from sixty thousand to twenty-five thousand. Carpet flooring shelving move twenty-five thousand to thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Resurfaced parking lot from twenty thou, twenty-five thousand to zero, and interior painting from twenty-five thousand to twelve thousand five hundred. Do board members have questions? Mr., if you could come up, Mrs. Ramsey.
I have a question as to why the, the major increase in roof replacement of sixty thousand dollars.
We, well, part of it is that the roof replacement turned out to be quite a bit more than we had anticipated. The other part is that it was recommended to us that we do both the lower and the upper roof at the same time, which I think will ultimately save money on doing them separately.
Mr. Simonian, did you have a question? Did someone else have a question? It was Mrs. Simonian.
I, I realize it's the same, we're just moving things around, but, so you won't be resurfacing the parking lot, and?
No, that has been put off for quite a while, but, you know, the roof is our top priority right now.
It's still something that needs to be done, you're just reprioritizing, I guess?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you for being here to answer our questions. Article twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are development and inspectional services and the planning board. We have Mr. Adam Barney here, if the Board has questions. Mr. Barney? Article twenty-two, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars from overlay surplus for the purchase, equipping, and marking of two, for, of two vehicles for the use in execution of town business. Mr. Barney?
This was actually a joint article with the Assessing Division. Both my department and the Assessing Division spend an extreme amount of time in the field. We're paying a lot of mileage, and we're sending people out in essentially unmarked vehicles. So these would be two high-mileage vehicles that would be identified as Town of Auburn vehicles with seals, blue plates, so when a building inspector or an assessor pulls up in a residential neighborhood, climbs out of the car and starts walking around a piece of property, either on a complaint or on, on evaluation, it wouldn't look sketchy. I know that I've received several calls from people about, people in their neighborhood looking at houses, and generally, it's either one of my inspectors or, or an assessor. So this is something that would eliminate a good portion of the mileage based on the value of the vehicles and the gas mileage that they get. There's a net savings over the first year of ownership, and being that we're looking at not using a debt service to purchase them, it increases the savings a little bit further.
Are there any questions? Mr. Simonian.
Just one. It says equipping and marking, so I understand the marking. Is there equipment that's being added to these vehicles?
We have talked about adding a GPS receiver. That's something we're having conversations with, just to identify where the vehicles are, and just add a little bit more confidence that these vehicles are being used for town business and not leaving town, other than at times when it's noted that they are.
So if this is appropriated, that's who will be using it for?
That's correct.
All right. It, it just seemed kind of vague, so I.
Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair. Adam, where are these vehicles going to be housed, and how are they going to be, you know, maintained and, you know, security-wise, so that we don't have any problems with them?
Well, they would be housed at town hall. There are a number of area residents who park their vehicles in the town hall parking lot. They tend to not be vandalized, so I have to offer the assumption that our vehicles would be offered the same level of courtesy. I think that we would make an effort to park them on the front side of the building, rather than the rear side of the building, in the evening, so that as the police do their patrols, they would be able to see that they are there and, and not either missing or damaged.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Simonian.
I just have one more question, through the chair, to the town manager, or to the assistant town manager. Where this article is not specific in the equipping, and what Mr. Barney said, this was GPS, if town meeting appropriates this money, is the fact that it's not specifically stated here, are, are they still bound to only use that for equipping them with GPS, or could this then, you know, kind of like the CIP, where we're passing an article for this, two years later, we're going to use it for something else?
No, it would have to be equipping these two vehicles only. I can tell you that a standard article for even the high school, to construct, furnish, and equip the high school, equip is a very catch-all type thing, so, but it's limited to these vehicles only.
All right.
Through the chair, if I may, Mr. Holstrom had also asked about the maintenance. I just want to make a note that all of our town vehicles are maintained through the Fleet Maintenance Unit at DPW.
Is there anything further on this one? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article thirteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Camden Drive as a public way. And as the Board knows, we just scheduled a street layout hearing earlier, so the Board may vote to.
Defer to the petition on this, so I'll make a vote.
Or hold it until.
Motion to defer to the petition on this.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article twenty-four, to see if the town meeting will vote to convey a parcel of land, excuse me, a parcel of town-owned land, property located at the corner of Rochdale and Burnett Streets, to a qualified abutter. Mr. Barney?
There is a small parcel of land, the size of it escapes me right now, I want to say it's about twelve hundred square feet, on the corner of Rochdale and Burnett Street. I believe that at one time, it may have been part of the original landowner that created Burnett Street. It was conveyed to the town in a quick claim deed with no restrictions. It has some utilities on it. I believe there's a sewer pipe that may cross it, and a number of telephone poles. The abutter who lives on, again, the name of the street is escaping me, but he directly abuts it. He's looking to have the opportunity to build a garage, and I believe craft shed for his family to use. He doesn't meet the setbacks. The town has very little use for this property, if any, and so he has approached the town about purchasing it. I believe that this would fit into the position that we're looking to dispose of, of land that the town doesn't have use for and may have liability on. I believe we've come to a general understanding on, on what he would like to pay for it, and, and what the town values it at, and we're working on putting together PNS prior to town meeting.
Are there questions?
That wasn't my question, whether there's going to be a fee that we're going to come to terms with?
Yes, there, there's most certainly is a fee.
Did you say there were town services currently on the, that property?
I believe that there is a sewer line that may cross it, or a drain line. As part of all the previous properties that we've sold, we've included the necessity that there be a survey done, that the property be combined with the purchaser's lot, and that in the event that there are any services or utilities, that the town would be providing itself with an easement prior to conveyance.
That's what I was going to ask you about, an easement. Mr. Simonian.
I just want to, so you have Burnett comes out to Rochdale, and you've got, if you're facing Rochdale, you've got the white fence.
It would be on the northeast corner. So if you were coming up Rochdale and turned right onto Burnett, it would be the corner on your right.
Okay, so the, the one that basically faces the pond?
Correct.
I didn't even know there were, oh, I know which, okay.
It's, it's a side street that comes back and around, and, and I believe it begins with an R, and I, it's escaping me.
I forgot there was someone, all right. That's fine, thanks.
Is there anything else on this one? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Mr. Barney. Article twenty-five, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a long-term lease agreement for Camp Gleason. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, the, one of the goals that the Board of Selectmen had given me this year was to develop a property disposition strategy or plan, and as you can see, a couple of these articles relate to that plan. We have been working to identify parcels that we either acquired through tax title, or they were surplus parcels due to a highway project, and we're looking to sell those parcels wherever possible to abutters, for, as Adam mentioned, as accessory use. It would bring revenues back to the town, put it on the tax rolls, and allow it to be maintained properly by the new owner. We do have an RFP out right now for the so-called Scavone property on Southford Street, again, trying to dispose of property that we've taken for various reasons and put it back on the tax rolls where possible. In this case, we have a facility at Camp Gleason, right up the street, that is sitting there vacant, and we've had a couple of parties approach us about the possibility of leasing the space out. So we would like to put this out to bid for a long-term lease. Anything over three years requires a, a town meeting vote to enter into a long-term lease. It's either that or special legislation. So we would like to have the town meeting consider allowing us to enter into a long-term lease agreement for the use of Camp Gleason, which could generate revenues, as well as keep the building maintained and preserve it for the future. If town meeting votes for a term not to exceed twenty years, if we don't know what that term is yet, we haven't developed the RFP, quite frankly, we don't want to put our time, effort, and any type of financial investment into it through town council, if it's not going to be something that is supported by town meeting. So we're holding off to see if town meeting supports it before we do an RFP.
What, with a long-term lease agreement, what would the town's liability be? Not specifically under, you know, but what would the town's liability be under a lease agreement? I mean, you've, it's a piece of property on water, and I would just be concerned with the town's liability.
We, under the RFP, it would be a requirement that certificates of insurance or insurance means be provided to the town for the protection of the town. We would get into the details of that in the RFP. Again, we've spoken to town council about this briefly, but we don't want to get into it in too much detail until we know that this is something that we're moving forward on. But the conceptual idea is, the property is sitting there, it's vacant, the building needs to be brought up to certain levels that could potentially be done by a potential lessee into the property, whether it's a five-year lease, a ten-year lease, a fifteen-year lease. Primarily, we're not going to be able to attract someone to make an investment, especially an investment into the leasehold improvements of the facility, if it's not a long-term lease, because there won't be any ROI for the return on investment for them, unless it's over a longer period of time.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Julie, when, if a leases agreement is reached, will the town no longer be able to use that building while there is a lease in place?
That's a, that's an interesting question. The discussions that we, we've had internally and with town council are, we would like to have the ability as a town to utilize that building when we need it, during the day, or occasionally on a weekend, or if we need it for a meeting. So we would structure the RFP, and therefore the lease, to enable us to be able to use that property with reasonable notice, whatever that notice may be, should we need it for any type of municipal purpose. So we would want to retain that right, understanding that it may infringe, to a certain degree, on an operations of a lessee, so we would have to work out the details of that, but that is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simonian.
So where, where the town, town would retain the property and essentially be leasing it out to a private entity, would there be any restrictions on, A, what it could be used for, and B, the modifications that could be made to it?
Through the chair, the use would have to be in compliance with the zoning for the area. So the RFP would be structured to say that, you know, the use would have to be either compliant with the current zoning, or that the lessee, the tenant, would have to have the ability within a certain amount of time to obtain a variance or a special permit, if that's the case. But our intent is, overall, to try to get a tenant in there that will maintain the property, hopefully make an investment into the property, still enable us to use it on[1783.08] enable us to use it on the rare occasion that we need it, and yet, keep it from being vacant, and, you know, as properties stay vacant for long periods of time, they start falling apart. And, you know, they represent a concern with potential crime, because they're vacant, and they also start to lose their market value. So our hope is to get a tenant in there that would give us the flexibility to use it on the rare occasion we need. As a matter of fact, we're using the basement level for our facility management, storage of equipment right now, which is all the equipment that's used, not all of it, but some of the equipment that is used by the facility management unit at DPW. So they are utilizing the bottom floors. Our intent to continue to use that. So yes, the use would have to be consistent with the current zoning for that area, or the tenant would have to have the ability to secure either a special permit or a variance, to do something different. All permits and appropriate local state approvals would have to be secured by any tenant. And this, again, this, this has to be disposed of through, whether it's a lease or a sale, we're still required to put it out to bid. So this is all in anticipation of thinking that we're not going to get anyone in there under three years. So we really need to look at the ability to lease it out long-term.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? And that completes the warrant. Next item is vote on a resolution adopting the Central Massachusetts Regionwide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. In your packet, you have the resolution. I am happy to read it if you want me to.
If I may, through the chair, this may look familiar, because approximately a year ago, the board of selectmen did vote a resolution to adopt the Central Mass Regionwide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. In the interim, MEMA has requested that a number of communities, I think almost all of them, to vote a resolution, again, because they changed some of the language. It's not a significant change to us at all, but MEMA wanted the language to be consistent amongst all of the participants in this. So the board did review the plan through our emergency management director and the local emergency management planning committee. They did vote already on a resolution. The, there were literally, I would say, 10 words that changed. It doesn't change the intent at all, it just keeps the language consistent with other resolutions, and it's per MEMA's request to re-vote it.
Are there any questions?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
It would be a motion to approve the resolution.
No move.
And second, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We have no gift acceptance, we have no proclamations. Do we have member items? I just wanted to mention that I picked up this flyer. For customers on the town trash system, allied waste will be picking up leaves, twigs, and lawn clippings in biodegradable bags or open containers weighing less than 50 pounds. Do not use plastic bags or Yatoda for yard waste. They will be picking up yard waste on the following Saturdays. Please have it to the curb by 7:00 a.m. The dates are October 19th, October 26th, November 2nd, November 9th, November 16th, and November 23rd, just so that people can plan on this, as the leaves are coming down already. Town manager items?
No, the only thing I would want to do is I just want to thank Mr. O'Connor, number one, for coming out tonight, and for saying such, giving such nice compliments to the town administration. It is absolutely appreciated, not just personally, but for all of us, because often, we do hear the complaints, which we should, but it's also, at the same time, very nice to hear the compliments. So grateful you took the time to come out. So thank you very much.
And we have no tabled items. Is there any additional public comments?
I just have one question.
Mrs. Simonian?
Through the chair, the town manager. You mentioned there, when we went through the warrant, and I forget which article, about financial policies, and trying to get things off of the borrowing, and while you were talking about that, and, because of all the things we went through, to, to the degree that it's possible, and I'm sure it's not easy, but four items, you know, like the vehicles, a lot of cemetery stuff, and things of that nature, that obviously have a specific life, do we try to, I know in business, we, systems, we try to stagger those, so we're not replacing all of the things in one department, and, you know, stagger those over the years, as, as they expire, reach end of life. Do we try to do that, so we're not always...
Through the chair, we have a plan within each department for capital expenditures. I know we have a five-year CIP, but we've been working on a multi-year, you know, looking out 10 to 20-year CIP, where we're trying to stagger those purchases. So as the fire chief mentioned, he had a purchase that was slated for 2016. He wants to move it up now, because he's planning for a purchase down the road that we may have to actually borrow for. So we do. DPW has a list of replacement, all the way out for 20 years, I believe, Bill, 20-year replacement plan. And I think the more we can, obviously, the more we can get onto the, get off of the CIP and put into the tax or the general fund, the better off will be on our debts.
All right, thanks.
We have no minutes, is there?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night.